... They might say they made it. At the end of the day, they make it along and they can get it. They can get it. They can get it. Everybody says you do it to yourself. They play for the law. You are a lawyer, they make it.
That's true.
They play the law as well.
Yeah.
Nothing worthwhile, Mr. Johnson.
Nothing.
Everybody come to that? Oh, my goodness.
Looky here.
This is this is. I'll be nice.
Drum roll.
Drum roll.
Probably like that the whole week forward since he done here.
Yeah, I see that.
Oh, yeah.
This is Mr. Anderson.
Hey, how are you? Nice to meet you.
How are you doing?
That's what he said.
Mr. Fletcher?
Charlie. Charlie's on his way. So we're waiting. We got time, man.
Does it end in a name? It sits where it wants.
It sits where it wants.
Next time he come in, he might be in the chair. He don't want to be there. Start showing up.
No, I don't know. They left. Jim, they left.
That's gonna be tough.
That's gonna be tough.
Thank you back. I would like to.
Well, thank you. Yeah, we had some old wood and the boy and I got out there. I think it's actually straight.
You saw the log today?
Yeah, I got maybe ten bales left, squares. But everything else is gone. And that's where somebody said, hey, can you just hold it for me type thing? I do that. Sometimes I wish it'd be gone, you know?
Just put it aside after you're done with that.
Yeah, there it goes, yeah.
Are you big shorts?
I could see that in such a dry summer.
Dry summer, wet weather, huh?
Yeah, boy, it really has here lately.
Some phrase is gonna be an early spring. It's not gonna get cold.
Good.
Unless we're gonna have a late winter, I hope so.
Be ready to go.
Boy, that's the first one in a long time, man.
Late July.
This will turn it on. Do you need a minute or are you ready? You ready? You don't need a minute?
Nope.
At this time, we will call the January twenty-six, twenty-seventeen, Ark County zoning board a justice meeting to order. If you would, please stand as we have the invocation followed by the closing allegiance. Ms. Anderson?
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the many blessings. We thank you for the opportunity to live in this great country of ours and in this beautiful county. Give us wisdom tonight as we carry out our duties for this prayer in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. I thank this opportunity to thank all the board members for being here. It's always a pleasure to have all the board members here. Full board, seven of us. I'd like to thank the staff, Amy, planning department for the hard work that y'all do to put this together. We would not have to worry too much since we do have a full board, but we'll go ahead and explain to everyone we have to have four votes to approve the variances here. As we should easier get that when you have the seven. We do appreciate our legal staff being with us, and I think Mr. Davis is in the house. We do appreciate all the hard work that they do. Sometime we definitely disagree, but we still give them credit. Are there any announcements need to be made?
No, sir. All the appeals are still pending. There's a transition between judges, so the new judge has been assigned those cases. So no updates on any, any of those matters.
Who's the new judge?
What's his name?
Louis.
Louis, yeah.
Where's the ground?
Jeff Lewis.
Jeff Lewis. He's, he was with conflict counsel, which ran the panhandle for, so he ran the office of conflict counsel, which would mean that if someone from the public defender's office was assigned a case but couldn't represent him, his office would come in and handle the conflict.
Does he, he live in Walton County or does he live?
I think, I think he's moving here, yeah.
He is gonna move here?
Yes, sir. He's, so.
You always worry if they're just temporary. They're gonna kind of stay a few months and transfer out, so maybe he'll stay with us.
Yeah, I think he's planning on it, so.
Mr. Davis, would you take and inform the board on Ms. Nipper's appeal? I think since it came before.
Yes, we received last week, I believe, an opinion from the DCA. They reversed Judge Santuri's injunctive relief that he gave the county. Oddly enough, not necessarily on the issues that we briefed or the other side briefed, but the, the DCA basically found that the county did not have a clear legal right to seek and receive an injunction because the way the general agricultural land use restrictions are written, the use of, the commercial skydiving use was not inconsistent in their reading with that general agricultural use. And that front, and, and the category gives examples of, of general outdoor commercial activity that's allowed. And they said those examples, the, the DCA said those examples are certainly no more impactful than the business that's going on there now. So they reversed their injunction and sent it back. We're done.
In the, in the scope of the...
By, by the way, I failed to mention, they did not reach the agritourism issue, just for, by way of information.
But in the scope of the language in, in the agriculture commercial use, then would it be added in the county's definition of, of use and agriculture use?
We're gonna have to take a look at it frankly, because one, one of the examples in the fact the DCA pointed this out is golf courses are allowed in that particular land use category, which, I mean, there is certainly an argument to be made. A golf course is pretty impactful in terms of traffic, environmental type stuff. So, yeah, we, we definitely need to take a look at what's allowed in general ag. And, and this opinion pointed us that way. Certainly did.
And that was the Florida District One?
District Court of Appeals. Three judge panel. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Was that unanimous?
Well, ye- yes, there was no dissent. There was no, it was a three-zero. To the truth, I don't remember all three judges' names. Judge Oyster House wrote the opinion, well-respected jurist, been around a while.
Good deal. Each person here tonight with an opportunity to come before this board to make a statement, either for or against the issues before us. To do that, you have to stand, raise your right hand to be sworn that the testimony you give will be the truth. So if you're here to speak, please stand, raise your right hand. Those are the items.
Thank you. Do you all swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so help you God?
We still have two items on the agenda tonight. Mr. Ron Vadam, pool variance. Who's here to speak on that for us? Kind of state your name for the record. You're good.
First, thank you for hearing my application. Second?
What's, what's your name?
Oh, Ron Viederman.
State your name.
Jamie Spakowski.
Second item is I don't, I have a hearing problem, and if it's okay, Jamie will tell me if I don't hear anything anybody says. And that's why I talk louder than the average person.
Say that again, then.
I have a hearing problem, so I talk louder than the average person. I'm not yelling, and if it's okay.
Oh, you speaking good.
If it's okay, she stands here so she can tell me whatever I don't get.
I've been, I've been told I have the same problem. I've been told that pretty often, so go ahead and state your reasons that we should grant you the variance tonight.
State.
State your reasons for the variance.
I have a, had rotator cuff surgery on both shoulders, and I have back problems, and I like to use the pool for aquatic water therapy. And as the current situation is, my yard is twenty-six feet deep with a fifteen-foot setback. That means I'd have to have a pool between eleven feet and the house. So I'm asking to go to four feet to the property line, which would still put me forty-nine feet from my neighbor's fence because I have a forty-five-foot common area behind me. I don't know if you need any more, or do I keep talking, or?
Do you have a medical, is a medical reason you need the pool? Is you?
That's what I would like it for, yes. I have shoulder surgeries. I have MRIs, I have CAT scans, not CAT scans, MRIs, but I do not have a note from a doctor because my doctor is in New Jersey and I just moved down here.
So you asking for eleven-foot variance, which will go from a fifteen-foot to a four-foot variance?
Correct.
For a pool. And then you have a common area before your neighbor?
Forty-five feet.
Forty-five feet.
And side setbacks, I'm not asking for a variance. I have plenty of room on the sides.
Has everyone been notified within three hundred feet?
You sent out the letters. The letters.
Yes.
Any questions?
Is it, does the neighbor have a pool? Is there a common pool available for residents?
Common pool.
Do we have a common pool? No.
We would give you opportunity to come back to speak before us. We're gonna let the county speak and anyone else, but you get to have the final say.
Come back.
Hang on. Go ahead, Charlie.
Thank you.
Is the pool covered?
What was that?
Is the pool covered? Is it just a flat pool?
Well, no, no cover.
No cover. Is heated?
Excuse me?
Heated? Heated just correct?
Heated.
Uh, no heat. Well, it hasn't, it would have a heat pump, but not necessarily heated all the time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bye. Ms. Vivian?
Good evening, commissioners. I'm open to if you have any questions.
It's pretty simple, isn't it?
It's, it's pretty simple. I think planning staff would not have an objection should you find that they have proven that there is a hardship. But that would be up to board members to determine the hardship.
We have no one in opposition, no letters, no neighbors, no one complaining, everything good?
We have received no comments.
No comment? That's good, right?
That's, that's always good.
Any questions? Thank you. Would y'all like to come back and add anything? Anyone else here like to speak in regards to this variance request? Do you want to add anything, or?
No.
I think you're good. Motion to close the discussion. Second? Scott motion, Mr. Fletcher second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion to approve? Wait me.
Oh, Scott made the motion.
Scott made the motion. Mr. Fletcher second. Discussion? Tony? Simple, Tony, simple.
Well, I, I have some concerns. It is next to a common area, which is a lot of my concerns, but as a general precedent, I think we have a lot of people retired here. Anyone who's retiring and has arthritis and pain or any kind of issue could request the same variance and have a legitimate request based on that. And due to a very structured, the county doesn't allow it. That's my concern.
Your concerns is what? I mean, I want to...
Well, I mean, we do like public facilities in the county. Pool facilities. Once you go on Freeport, you know, Freeport has fantastic facilities. But in general, we have a large retirement community.
Right.
And with that comes arthritis, rotator cuff, knee surgeries, all these issues. And basically, you know, just anyone would be able to request the same thing.
That's right. And they have. I mean, we've granted these for pools before.
It's just, it's...
What's your, I'm, I'm just asking, why, why does it concern you with the, with the common area?
It does. The, the common area actually alleviates a lot of my concerns. If it wasn't a common area, I'd be very concerned. But, you know, obviously the, I don't, I actually don't agree with the county's policy on pool setbacks. I don't think they should be subject to the same effect. That's personal. I don't know if it would have been what I'm born. But, you know, basically, you know, if you're a young family, you can't get a pool. If you're, you know, an older retiree, you can get a pool. I mean, that doesn't seem quite square.
We never turn down a young person.
I'm sorry?
We never turn anybody down, young. We, you know, usually if there's no opposition to it, we usually try to work with them. Hardship for young people would be their children to keep on, on the streets. That's a hardship.
I agree with that. Anyway, it's a concern. I'm not, I'm opposing it. I'm just saying.
I always want to hear your concern. Mr. Fletcher?
I have no questions, no comments. It's the vegeta, the boundary back there, the forty-five feet, that alleviates any concerns I would have.
They would have to have a fence, right? The pool would have to be fenced?
Yeah.
Ms. Anderson?
No concerns, no, no comments?
Mr. Dixon?
No. Fence and the setback, that's fine.
Scott? No comment yet?
No.
You always do. Come on, it's been a while.
Well, I can say the same thing this guy said. I mean, I've got two bad rotators and seven back surgeries, so I'm all for you.
You have to disqualify yourself. Charlie?
I'm good.
Close the discussion?
Motion to close.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
We have a motion to approve, and we have a second. Charlie, how do you vote?
Uh, approve, aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Tony?
It's safe, it's true.
Your variance, your variance request has been approved.
Thank you.
You can build your pool.
Thank you.
We appreciate you coming tonight. Gives us something to do. Thank you.
You want to be asked over?
No, you'll be getting your final order every week.
Next item on the agenda is the variance request. Who's here to? State your name for the record, please.
My name is Keith Johnson. I'm at three-three-zero-eight Gulf Beach Highway, Pensacola, Florida. I, I own a environmental consulting firm in Pensacola called Wetland Sciences. The applicant contacted me about a month ago with respect to the development of the lot subject to this variance request. And his, uh, first questions to me were what sort of remedy could I provide or may I assist him with in terms of reducing the setback on, on the wetland that's within the lot? And that was the first thing that our firm looked at. There is a wetland in the northern third of the property. As such, there is a twenty-five-foot buffer off of that wetland. That wetland buffer is actually depicted in the recorded plat. I informed the applicant that in Walton County, that the delineated distance that's required in the wetland protection ordinance is actually specified in the comp plan. And, and as such, you can't actually get a variance or obtain a variance for that one setback provision. Obviously, the applicant has a home in which they would desire to construct within the lot. And in, in my opinion, the only remedy was to request a variance on the front building setback, to actually hold the, the rear setback on the wetland and, and an attempt to request a variance on the front building setback. So that's the, the subject of the case today. I put together a letter request attached to the variance application. As I mentioned, we are seeking a variance of five feet from the front building setback. The front building setback is twenty-foot for the, for the zoning category. We're requesting a variance of five feet, so that would reduce the front building setback to fifteen feet. The applicant is desiring to build a, a single-family residential home. This is not an investment property or, or anything that the applicant is doing for profit. They're actually moving here from Mississippi to reside in, in South Walton County. The home will have a, a base footprint of twenty-eight-hundred square feet, of which fifteen-hundred will be actual living on the base floor. It'll be multiple stories. It'll be a, a two-story home with a total living area of thirty-two-hundred square feet. In our opinion, looking at other homes in the subdivision which are similarly situated, the size home is consistent with those and, and common in character with other homes that are suitably, uh, similarly situated. In our letter of request, we, we obviously, we went through each one of the criteria that's required to demonstrate that you meet the variance criteria. That obviously allows you to approve a variance request. Be happy to go over each one of those if you'd like. If not, I can reserve if you have any questions after reviewing that letter of request. I don't know. I can come back if we have any questions with any one of those. But that's it. I mean, essentially, the unique circumstances that are occurring within this lot are the presence of, of a wetland community. Looking at the recorded plat, the wetland community juts into this property more so than other properties which are similarly situated. So it is unique to this one lot, and it actually reduces the amount of buildable footprint that is on this lot. So that's the, the special circumstances. And, and we're not gonna change the land use. Land use will remain the same and continue to be a single-family residential. These conditions, while there are wetlands on other lots in the subdivision, those wetlands do not project as far or occupy as much of the lot as it does in this. This lot, in my opinion, the wetlands occupy more of the lot than any other lots. And so in order to build a home consistent with the common character of the subdivision and in general conformance with the other square footage of the homes that are located in the subdivision, the variance of five feet from the front building setback is required. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
And you say you can't build within the buffer?
You cannot.
You cannot get a variance within the buffer?
No, sir.
There's no way around that whatsoever?
The problem is that the, the stated, the distance, the buffer distance is actually specified in the comp plan. That's my interpretation. I'm not a lawyer or, or can provide legal advice. But I know in other counties that have obviously a comp plan, land development code, comp plan gives you sort of like basic policy, county shall protect wetlands. Then land development code drills down and says, wetlands shall be protected by affording a twenty-five-foot upland buffer. Most counties have that sort of structure, like Escanby County, for example, has a very similar wetland protection ordinance. But that delineated distance not specified in the comp plan, it's actually specified in land development code, which allows us to get variances. They have some flexibility. It's my understanding that Walton County and the comp plan, that distance is actually specified within the comprehensive plan, and I don't think by law Walton County can actually grant a variance when it's specified in the comp plan. I'll let the planning director speak to that.
I would have responded from the table, Matt Carpenter, for the planning department, but these microphones were not operable for purposes of recording, so I did want to get the response to your question on the record. The protection of the primary wetland and the secondary wetland protection zone, which is the twenty-five-foot buffer around the delineated wetlands, are both in the comprehensive plan as hard requirements, and we have no opportunity to waiver from those.
What if, what if your lot, and maybe I shouldn't bring this up, but what if the lot is small enough to where you would have to? I mean, this is a lot of records since nineteen, is this a old seagrass? Lot of records since the fifties?
Um, I'm not sure that this one is. I think this is a more recent subdivision.
Okay.
But in this particular case, the planning department does believe that this lot does have a physical hardship that would support the variance request that they're applying for. And we feel that, given the encumbrance of the lot with the wetland and the secondary wetland protection zone, their request for a five-foot reduction in the front setback is a very reasonable accommodation in our professional opinion.
But Mr. Johnson, to answer your question, we have obtained remedies other than a variance for the wetland setback, which includes acquiring a state and a federal permit to fill a portion of the wetland. And, and in those instances, I believe the buffer is no longer looked at as a buffer because the wetland has become filled. In our opinion, that's a less desirable remedy. Obviously, it encourages environmental impact. And if, if we can obtain a remedy of, of obtaining a five-foot setback from the buffer, that would be something we'd rather do than encroaching into the wetlands and then actually going through the hardship of actually acquiring a state and a federal permit to fill wetlands.
That's where you get in mitigation?
Yes, sir.
Of properties and all that.
Avoidance, minimization, alternative analysis, mitigation.
Just to clarify on your drawing. Anyway, it's the drawing sketch of the house.
Yes, sir.
You have, you have one line there that is fifteen, just to make sure where you have the twenty?
Yes, sir.
That is, that's still fifteen?
Yes, sir. I'm showing, I'm showing, um, I'm showing the, the current setback of twenty feet and then the projection of the home fifteen feet.
But you have two, two parts of the house jetting into the setback?
There are only two parts of the house. The actual road is curved.
Right.
And, and so, and the house is actually squared to both the east and the west property lines. I mean, squared.
But you, you're sure of your drawing?
Yes, sir. Absolutely, hundred percent.
And the other question I have is the road, the road is not thirty-eight, it's a side road off of thirty-eight.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Absolutely correct.
Any questions? No questions? Tony?
Is that wetland in the back hardwood?
I'm sorry?
That's a hardwood.
Yes, sir.
It runs all the way, that's...
It does. It's like an unnamed tributary. Correct. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
We will see if there's anyone else would like to speak and give you the chance to come back. Ms. Vivian? Where's Mr. Brown? Is he still with y'all? He don't come no more? I mean...
He's sick as well.
He's sick?
This one.
I thought him and Scott been hanging out. They don't show up no more.
Well, I have a similar response as to the first request that I think if the applicant has shown the hardship proven to you, county does not have any issues with granting of this variance. Seems to be a very reasonable request.
This is getting a little bit too easy. Thank you, ma'am.
These, these two were...
We do for some easy.
Better.
Yeah. We did some controversy. Anyone else like to speak?
Yes. We'll see what we can do for next month.
Okay. Good deal. State your name for the record, please.
How's everybody doing?
My name is Jim Ryan. My address is seventy-eight Suzanne Drive. I live on the street right across from this particular lot. And personally, I would be opposed to the five... And personally, I would be opposed to the five-foot variance on the front of the property. Obviously, I didn't know that you could not get a variance in the back of the property. I would much prefer if the variance was in the back of the property. The lot does slope off significantly in that wetland area. And I don't know, a few years back, we had that rain where we got like twenty inches of rain. And the water there pretty much comes right up to that wetland line, so there's still plenty of room in that twenty-foot area. And then also, there's a couple of houses for sale in the neighborhood as well, and people are trying to buy them to get variances to be able to put a pool in the front of the yard, because with the twenty-five-foot setback, people don't have enough room to put a pool in the back on that particular side of the street. And so I would not like to see this variance granted, because then the next person's going to want to put a pool in the front yard. And I mean, five feet is not much. It's not like I'm totally opposed to it, but if there was a better way to do it, I would prefer that they would try to seek other options. Also, if you look at the drawing on the house, I think with a little bit of architectural stuff, they still have room on the northeast corner of that property where they have uplands, where they could stair-step that house back some way and still have room to get the square footage that they're looking for. The house is kind of flat, and when you only have fifteen feet on the front and you're coming off the street, it's not really a lot of room for parking and for other items. And everybody else that's on that side of the street who has built homes have all been on the twenty-foot setback as well.
Whenever we grant variances, it doesn't set a precedent that we will grant variances to the next lot. I mean, you know, we look at each one, and we do appreciate you coming before us.
Yeah, I just wanted you to be aware of that.
And we would definitely take each lot as an individual, and we have to look at those as they come before us.
Okay.
The other question I have for you, and I may not should ask this, but I will. Have you come before us before with a variance request? Or did you run for a political office? You seem like you've been familiar.
I was on the board for four years with you.
That's why. I've been on there for some. Okay. Very good. Thank you, sir. Mr. Johnson? Is there anything you can do to talk to Mr. Ryan to help him to justify the size of the house? It seems like that's a complaint that he has.
No, sir. Based on the plans of the home that Mr. Corey would like to construct within the lot, there's just no room. I mean, obviously, if there was a remedy to obtain a variance for the rear setback, that would have been the first thing that we would have tried to obtain. We are adjacent to the side setbacks as much as possible and without adding curves to the front wall or rear portions of the home, which is, I don't know, ununique to the character of the subdivision. No, I don't think there is any other alternative remedy other than requesting a five-foot variance to the front setback.
Your drawing shows, you said there's twenty-eight. What did you say, twenty-eight or thirty-two hundred square feet under roof?
Total living area of the home will be thirty-two hundred square feet. The base footprint of the home, the base living area of the home will be fifteen-hundred square feet. Obviously, there are portions that include the garage that are not included in the fifteen-hundred as living area. So it'll be about twenty-two hundred base, well, twenty-eight hundred would be the base of that. Fifteen-hundred would be the living area.
Where is your garage at?
We actually have a full-size set of plans here that I could show you, but it's on the, if you're looking at the drawing, it would be on the right side of the drawing. It's about a twenty-by-twenty-foot garage area.
Anytime there's opposition, we need to pay attention to a little bit, so that's why we're going to have a little further discussion. If you have something to say, you can state your name.
Yeah, Mr. Corey's here. He's the applicant.
Thank you so much. My name is Peter Corey. My wife is with me, Laurie Corey. We've moved here from Jackson, Mississippi, and for our permanent home, we're not, you know, here to flip or try to make an investment, or I have two kids in college, and we've been coming down here for twenty years and said, this is where we want to live. And so this is our permanent home, and want to try to build it. The only thing I want to point out is that the twenty, my twenty-feet front setback doesn't start until it gets twelve feet off the street. So I have twelve feet, and then I have the twenty. So that even restricted me more. So it's not twenty from the street. And I'm going to be fifty from the street. I'm going to be, I'm going to be twelve plus twenty, thirty, you know, thirty-two minus five. I'll be twenty-seven from the feet from the street. So that was as well. And then, of course, the county allows seven-and-a-half, seven-and-a-half-foot setbacks on the side, but there are neighborhood covenants that require you to do ten feet. And although there are other neighbors that have not chosen to do that, we are rule followers, and we're going to abide by the ten-feet setbacks. And so it's just a real constricted lot, particularly with the twenty-five feet. But thank you for the consideration.
Well, how much, how many square feet is in the, is in the setback out of your house?
How many square feet?
Just, if you take your dotted line...
Yeah, I've got ten feet on each side. I've got ten, I've got ten feet on each side, and I've got...
No, 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 no.
I'm sorry.
You've got your dotted line here.
Yes.
That shows your twenty-foot setback.
Right.
And then you have the area where it's in the setback. How much of your house, square footage, would be in the setback?
Oh, and that's if we moved it forward. Very, I don't know the exact number, and I apologize. Very little, because it's just a little bit going over that five feet because of the way the house is designed, is it?
So you probably have five there, but you have two there, and that's twenty, so that'd be roughly three, three times twenty-six.
This is Keith. I would say about seventy, about seventy square feet, just looking at the drawing.
That's what I mean. If you go five and two, saves us three, three times twenty is six. That should be sixty, sixty square feet.
That just did it.
What is it?
Thirty.
Thirty feet.
Yeah, three times...
That should be five. From there to there is five. You know, from there to there should be...
The testimony is that you believe it's seventy feet that would be...
I'm trying to do a rough calculation. I mean, we could have provided this, but...
That's sixty feet, that's about sixty feet across, so six times five, three hundred.
That'd be six, no, that's sixty square feet. That's going to be...
Roughly, you're not talking less than...
I would say ninety square, my professional opinion, looking at it here, would be about ninety square feet. Ninety square foot of the home would project beyond the twenty-foot setback.
Well, our numbers are wrong.
That's both places.
Can I ask you a question?
Oh, both places, yeah.
But if you shift this, cut this corner off, shift that back. I don't know what's in that corner.
The two areas in the back that appear to do what if you push the house back, what we're encroaching in the setback, are those both porch areas?
Those are porch areas and a potential pool in the back, you know, but right now, even if I had to build a pool, it would not be much of a pool. It'd be more of a jacuzzi, because we're so tight back there.
So the first corner, the corner that basically touches the back line, looks like it's about a five-foot porch, or basically sidewalk?
On the northwest corner, from where my house is to that wetland, I have like five feet.
Right, to the house itself.
To the house itself. And then as you move further to the east, only have like fourteen feet from the house.
But those are both porches? And the five-foot porch isn't really, how you use that porch?
Oh, you're talking about, that's an upstairs porch. If you're looking, that's a porch coming off the upstairs. There's a porch on the far right off the kitchen on that plan on the northeastern corner. That's like a thirteen-foot porch.
And that's just projecting out?
That's what you see projecting out, yes, sir. And then beyond it, there's only like fourteen feet. It's very, very tight back there.
You're looking at this also, right? You don't do it. Close to the last bit.
So what's the county policy on aerial encroachments into buffers? Or is it the same as the standard setback, or are they all more restrictive?
Oh, on what? Encroachments?
Second-floor encroachments, overhangs?
Yes, we're restrictive. Yes.
No more restrictive?
Well, if you're talking about like an eve overhang or something like that, no, I think there can't be anything encroaching into the buffer.
So the buffer is treated more strictly than the side setback?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Johnson? It is a concern, you know, that there's ninety feet, and it, you know, it appears to me, if you cut the back corners off or it touches the buffer, then you wouldn't need the variance. Would you agree with that on the porch? Then you're not losing a lot of the porch. You wouldn't lose...
I think...
You wouldn't lose ninety feet of the porch to gain ninety feet in the front.
Yeah. I mean, my profession is not a home designer, so it's hard for me to qualify what can be done in terms to accommodate Mr. Corey's needs. But I believe what Mr. Corey was saying is that a portion of, especially when you look at the northwest corner of the home, there's less flexibility. So unless we start coming up with a home design...
Let's identify the northwest corner on this sheet. Other, the one that touches right there in the, where that triangle in the buffer?
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Now go ahead, but that's a porch.
And just in my own humble opinion, not being a home designer or architect or anything of that nature, I mean, it would obviously require Mr. Corey to come up with a very, you know, almost dimensional walls of the home that match either the curvature of the wetland buffer and the front setback, which I would assume would cause practical difficulties with Mr. Corey, but he could speak to that.
Well, my, again, if I was trying to build this as a spec home or a rental home or whatever, I wouldn't have any problem. But this is where my wife and I plan to reside the rest of our lives, and my children are the age that hopefully are going to have grandchildren not too long from now. And I really have a desire on that northeast corner where that other little area is, is to have a little bit of a pool to enjoy the rest of my life here. And again, I just could have chosen to build anywhere, I guess, but I chose Walton County. I chose this neighborhood. I love the neighborhood. I love the people I've met in the neighborhood, and I just want to have this home where I can build it and enjoy it the rest of my life. I don't, I'm fifty-six, I don't plan on doing many more homes again. And so I would like that northwest-eastern corner, if you will, to have an area for that pool.
Mr. Corey? Let me just, you see right here? This part right here?
Yes, sir. That's what I put, that's right.
That's the upstairs porch? This part right here where it's a little five-foot walk and then whatever this is?
That's, that's, that's how the plan is, that's how the draw is shown. That's a overhang, and that's also a porch on the right side. And this right side is a porch outside of the, outside of the van right here. Yeah, that's a porch right there.
But is it the second floor?
It's also a second-floor porch. It's downstairs and a second-floor porch.
All right, so this...
So the patio I have is that area right there.
Right there.
North of your pen. Yes, I will have a little, that is that extra area there is the only thing I have back there for a patio.
Okay, now this part right here that touches the twenty-five-foot setback, is that second floor?
That's an upstairs porch that comes off a room up there, and I may have to delete that, because if I have to move anything in the house, I can't allow it to, even can't leave a wetness area.
Right. But what's below it on the first floor?
Three feet of patio, and my house, and about three feet to the wetlands area.
Okay, so your house actually goes a little bit further?
That's about right. That's exactly, it goes well. I got to have about five feet from the back of my house to that wetness area in most of it. In the northeastern corner, there is that area about fourteen feet to the wetness area. I just have a very, very little patio up here. And above that, there's...
All right, now this part right here that's circled?
Yes.
What is this square right there?
That's the back of the house.
This is the back house right here. So even if you...
House or porch?
So even if you cut a portion of this off, the three-foot, and I can tell you right now, three-foot times twenty-seven, even if you slid it back two-point-six feet parallel, I mean, parallel with the property line, you're still going to encroach on that. So even that idea wouldn't even work.
It's everything I'm doing is an encroachment.
I got you.
What are you talking about? You sitting there telling me he can't cut off just a corner there and a corner there and move it back?
Without getting into a lot of math, if you take the sine function of that angle, let's just call forty-five, sine forty-five is twenty-seven roughly, times three is two-point-six. So even if you split it up parallel, and you got this corner now that he's cut off, stuck in that, this corner of this house is going to encroach.
Not if he cuts it off. Is it a house or porch?
That's part of the house.
Mr. Chairman, do y'all want to finish your questions? Because a lot of this you can handle during your discussion.
We're going to discuss this. I'm discussing with him to get clarity on what he does have of him, and I'm engaging in this conversation. If he would, we would. Did you say this is a porch, or is that part of your house? The northwest corner?
Northwest corner is my house.
That's your house, not your porch?
I'll follow with you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, may I state one more issue?
Yes.
Just also, in rendering your decision and in your discussions, just keep in mind that the secondary wetland protection zone has to remain intact. It's not a yard. It's not something that the applicant can maintain. It remains in a vegetated wooded state. He is not allowed to impact that whatsoever. So it's not as if he has a yard, that that twenty-five-foot serves as some type of manicured yard back there. It's actually a natural forested system that cannot be impacted. So even trying to like get around the home itself to physically, you know, do maintenance work, you know, replace siding or windows, I mean, at least this provides him just a little bit of room. I mean, he has portions of his structure that touch it, but even if we were to talk about trimming the home or fitting it, it's still, it's sandwiched in between the front setback, which the front setback, you can have a yard. I mean, obviously, there is a yard from the front setback to the street edge. But from the rear of that structure to the wetland setback is the only manicured yard that will be in this entire lot. Everything within, everything between the wetland buffer, that line, that twenty-five-foot line, and the delineated wetland boundary line must remain in a natural state.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any questions? Anybody else has any questions? Mr. Jim, come on up.
I'm not an expert on this, but maybe you can help me. In the twenty-five-foot buffer area, you are allowed to clear it, is that correct? No. You can't, you can't cut down any tree, anything like that? Okay.
You can't just like the pan clearing a small debris and anything?
You're allowed to go in with a chainsaw, with clippers. Right. You're not allowed to disturb the soil, but you are allowed to...
Limited to a four, limited to a four-size panel? Clearing out what's in certain debris, you know, smaller, but it's any period.
Yeah, you're allowed to actually, you can go in there with a chainsaw if you want.
No, sir.
You can't?
No, sir.
So what can you do?
It's like there's a wall.
That's correct.
Again, I am not totally opposed to them getting the five feet. That's, you know, that's the conclusion you come to. I can live with that. But I also, the county has the seven-and-a-half foot. The subdivision does have a ten-foot. The guy's right, there are houses in the neighborhood that are seven-and-a-half and not ten. Nobody's complained about it in the past. You know, maybe they can widen the house instead of pushing it out towards the front.
Mr. Jim, I think, you know, serving on the board would give everybody the opportunity to try to explain ways to not grant variances. And Lord knows, I tried to look at, and you heard a discussion tonight, the fifteen-hundred square feet is not that big of a downstairs area. And with Scott's explanation, with their explanation, I think, you know, I was leaning to trying to see how to not grant the variance, if they can shift the house. I don't think that's possible. If you don't have a big issue with it, we appreciate that.
Okay.
But I can assure you... But I can assure you, and from serving on the board, you know that just because we grant one variance, it's not a rubber seal to everyone that comes before us. And when they start coming on the pool side, please come and voice your opinion, because we do appreciate it.
Okay.
And you know that. Thank you very much. Close of public discussion.
Motion to close.
Amy, you got that?
Tony.
Bill made the motion. Will, Scott, Tony seconded. They did it at the same time.
We got it.
Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Who's seconding? Mr. Dixon seconded. Discussion. Charlie, we'll start with you.
I don't, do they have anything to add? I don't think there's anything. Did I got a problem with?
Scott?
We are never.
Mr. Dixon?
I'm good.
Mr. Anderson?
I'm good.
Mr. Fletcher?
I'm always delighted when I coincide with the staff. And they're not objecting. And there's, isn't a strong objection from the one individual. So that's all I got.
You want to go ahead and vote on it? Not give Tony the chance? Come ahead, Tony.
Uh, this structure could certainly be accommodated, but the, the loss of the use of the backyard and the restrictions on the lot, I think, put a legitimate hardship.
Yeah. Close of discussion?
Motion to close.
Second?
Second.
Call in favor, aye?
Aye.
Amy, you got all of that? Motion to approve. Tony, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Fletcher?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Dixon?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Your variance has been granted. You will receive the final order, and good luck to you. We appreciate you being here. We appreciate your discussion. We appreciate Mr. Jim's discussion. Thank you, Mr. Jim. Everyone has a chance to review the minutes? Yeah. Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Call in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? Call in favor, aye?
Aye.
That's a pretty good deal. I thought we were gonna do this without any discussion. Jim, you got, you got to try to figure when they start opposing.
Yeah.
If they don't oppose, then.
It's amazing. I mean, two different times. I'm not really overly opposed.
Yeah. Yeah.
I just take the first two dividers as.
We need to start having these in North Carolina, don't we?
Well, we do, I believe.
Pretty neat to have all seven here.
When are you going back to the bottom?
Uh, probably in two months.
Really? Do the lot with military then.
Well, you should.
Oh, you got.
Must go down.
Like 39.
That's right.
T-shirt.
Well, that's why we got so many people sick, I think.
Yeah.
We got like 40 kids in grade up there.
When the, when the contract.